Like to welcome everybody and call to order Bowling Green Town Council meeting Thursday, May 4, 2023. And I find you, everybody rise and please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, town attorney is running a little late. She will be here very, very soon. We're proceeding on. We do have a council member that is on social media on Zoom, and I need a motion to that will allow him to attend a meeting electronically, please?
So moved, second.
Second.
I got a motion by Jeff Voight. I got a second by, was it you Randy or Arthur? Arthur. Second by Arthur. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. David, welcome.
Thanks. Appreciate you accommodating me.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. David, what is your nature of vacancy?
I'm out of state on travel business.
Okay, home biz. All right, thank you, sir. Been noted. All right, we are, first thing on the list is public hearing. I understand we have somebody who would like to speak. I'm sorry, not public hearing, moving on down to public comments. We have no delegations, no public hearing. I understand we have somebody who would like to speak at public comments. Come on up, state your name, address, and floor is yours for two or three minutes.
You'll want to hit the button on that microphone at the base there. Well, if you could for David to hear you.
My name is Sam Frye. I live in 111 East Providence Avenue in uptown Bowling Green. The council members, the mayor. I represent a brand-new business alliance called the Bowling Green Vendors Alliance, and I believe Randy has given all of you our first endeavor, which is a brochure. And folks, you can pick one of these up at numerous businesses in town. They all had a stack, 12 to 14 of them, so you can pick one of those up. On the front is our main objective or mission statement. And essentially, what we're trying to do, folks, is increase foot traffic, increase business, aid in tourism, just get people to come into town and see how wonderful Bowling Green actually is. I don't know if you're aware of this or not, but when we were putting this together, we went out and we began contacting businesses within what we call, what we call Market Square. If you go from the Danish Chic to Mike's Bake Shop along Main Street, to DMK Firearms, down to Susie Bella's, and just outside that periphery, there are 51 small businesses in Bowling Green. That's a lot for a town that size. At any rate, inside you will see where we have listed some of the promotionals that the alliance is going to be involved in initially, and what we are asking, and hopefully granted, is cooperation between town council and ourselves as we try to increase business in Bowling Green. My understanding is there was a roundtable that had been scheduled, Allison?
That's correct. It's to be done still, yes.
And when is it?
It was scheduled for April, but we've had to delay due to budget and some other things, but we are planning on having that still.
But you don't have a date right now?
No, we don't.
Okay. Well, I would encourage you and council, whoever's involved in that, to put that together because I think it makes a huge difference when you can get town council to sit down with small business owners, hear our concerns, hear your suggestions, come up with some strategies and how we can help each other. Because, you know, sometimes I think there's a disconnect between what business owners are trying to do, what we'd like to do, what our goals are, and the vision that town council may have. And I think if we had something like the roundtable, we would sit down and just talk and get the thoughts from each other, pick each other's brains. Okay? Questions? Initially, we targeted the vendors in town. We have not contacted all of them because we're a brand-new organization. Second level would be to contact service businesses, and then we will hopefully grow and be successful.
Sam, you said you had a meeting, you had a meeting once a month, and you had to make up tonight, but what was your regular meeting date?
We're going to make it the first Thursday of every month, which I know is going to conflict with town council. So I think what I'm going to do is contact the members we have so far. Maybe we want to rethink that. But we would encourage folks, townsfolk, citizens of Bowling Green, are welcome. We meet at the corner shop, and we post, we will be posting stuff on the website that Randy put together, Merchants of Bowling Green, and certainly town council. If you'd like to stop by, we would appreciate that.
Sam, is this a membership organization?
We are in the process of discussing how we're going to go about that. We are not wedded to the idea of making it a paid membership. This brochure, the five or six businesses that are the startup group, we ate the cost of the brochure. We're going to begin putting together a directory of businesses. Actually, we'll be starting this week, going out and talking to business owners and so on, put a directory together. Part of that is to let folks know what all the businesses are in Bowling Green. In addition to that, is let the people know something about the folks that are small business owners, where you can, you can, you know, where they come from, something personal information about them that might help. We're also going to put together a map of what we call Merchant Square, and that'll be coming out probably sometime this summer. You're welcome.
Thank you, Sam. It sounds like a really good idea.
Yeah.
And we'll, you know, we'll get that meeting. Like I said, it was supposed to have been scheduled, and we were supposed to do it, and things just blew up a little bit, and we didn't get around to it. But like I've told you, it's, it's going to happen.
I hope so.
Because that's one of my goals as well, is get the town and businesses working.
Sure. And, you know, when you can get, in a rather informal setting, you know, you guys get to sit down and talk to us, meet some of the business owners and so on, and, you know, it lessens the possibility of any misunderstandings between council. You know, because we're all in this together. If Bowling Green succeeds, everybody succeeds.
That's right.
You know?
Sam, have you coordinated with the county as well? Because they have a lot of information on their website in regards to services.
We have not yet. Like I say, we're in our infancy.
Gotcha.
So, you know, we have this, this calendar of events, which will be done quarterly as we get more members and more people coming in and so on. And we have the map, and we have the directory. And, yeah, we will reach out to the board supervisors because they've always been helpful.
Can you go over and ask that?
Yes, eventually. Yes, we will. So.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you all. Moving on to members' comments. Any members have any positive comments they would like to address out? Positive, only positive. Negative, watch out the door.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, before you start that, there may be others that have public comments.
You're right. Thank you. I'm sorry. I have not closed public comments. Excuse me. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Calling last time, seeing nobody here, and public comment is closed. Member comments is now open. Thank you. Nobody, all right, closing members' comments. Moving on to staff reports and presentations. First up, we have final analysis of groundwater supply by SandTech. I believe he's coming up and give us another one of them positive presentations.
Good evening, everybody. This will be relatively brief on my end unless you all have questions, specific requests to go over here. So things that have happened since last time we spoke, as you may recall, last time I did present some interim, interim groundwater modeling results that showed that the town appeared to be feasible from a technical perspective to be able to increase their current groundwater withdrawal up to somewhere around 100 million gallons per year. That was interim in stage only because DEQ goes through an annual update of their groundwater model, and it took a long time for us to obtain those files from the state. So we, with their updated model files, we ran, reran those simulations to confirm that nothing has changed, and the results are nearly identical. So I, we had submitted, SandTech has submitted a memorandum summarizing their findings from the feasibility study that we conducted, which was provided, I believe, last week or maybe two weeks ago that details the simulations we ran, the amounts of withdrawal of each of those, and the, and the expectation that under DEQ's, what they call a technical evaluation, it would be feasible for the town to obtain a permit of up to approximately 100 million gallons per year. So that said, there is still a lot to go through as far as permitting process goes. This technical, what they call a technical evaluation, is only one piece of that puzzle. They also consider the justification that's prepared. So there's a detailed justification of your water demands, you know, your projections based on, I'd be aware of. And there's also a consideration of regional water supply issues. It's pretty well-known that in the coastal plain of Virginia, a lot of areas are having groundwater supply difficulties because of historic over, over-allocation of the resource. This area is no different. So there are parts of Caroline County, they're, you know, a little bit further east. There are areas that are experiencing difficulty growing due to their groundwater supply situation. So although the towns, when the DEQ will go and evaluate towns' withdrawal, we expect that it will technically pass their evaluation. There is a decent chance that they will require some, what they call special conditions attached to this permit. It's not guaranteed at this stage for sure, but based on our experience and the groundwater draw permits that have been issued recently, and in cases similar to this, there's often a condition called an alternate water source investigation. The way that we've seen a lot of these worded is they will grant a permit, you know, assuming that you're able to justify the amount of water that you're looking for adequately in DEQ's eyes, and you pass this technical evaluation, they will issue a permit for that volume. But there will also be a condition in that permit that, over the course of the next 15 years, you will take steps to evaluate the potential for utilizing a different water source for the town. The goal of that being to reduce the reliance of everyone on the aquifer system. So wherever it's possible, DEQ is trying to emphasize surface water as the ideal option because there's a lot more of it in Virginia than there is groundwater. So our big-picture findings from this is it appears to be feasible to proceed with an expansion of the groundwater draw permits that you currently have, with the potential caveat of, you know, this may not be the, you know, forever solution. This is likely to be a solution that will get you through, you know, maybe the next 15 years for your withdrawal, depending on the growth rates and water demands of the town. But there are likely to be conditions attached to that permit that will require the looking into of other water sources. So that's yet to be seen. If the town decides to proceed with the groundwater draw permits, you know, we'll iron that out as we start discussions with DEQ. So I think that's basically the summary of the status of that evaluation and where we stand right now. And I understand we have also submitted a proposal to complete that permit application. I understand that's an item for later discussion tonight. So I'll leave it at that unless anyone has any questions.
So the alternate source, does the town use the county's plan for that? Do they have to offer that?
That is, that is an option. You would have to discuss on your, on the town's side specifically, what would it take for you to be able to implement that? So, you know, the county is pursuing the expansion of their surface water source, and, you know, as that is an option to Bowling Green, you know, that, that requirement, what we've seen before is it's relatively vaguely worded. So it gives you a little bit of flexibility to investigate, you know, what makes sense for you. So the one that I'm thinking of most recently had a requirement for, within five years of permit issuance, it had a requirement for submittal to DEQ a plan to investigate an alternate water source. So that, in that case, if that was the requirement, you could simply submit a plan talking about, you know, what are the financial implications of going this direction, you know, working with the county? What would, what would the next steps be to do something like that? Does that answer your question?
And Mr. Mayor and council, I did rewrite a letter and presented it to DEQ to participate in that project, and it was accepted. So just found that out this week. So I think we can probably use that. Thank you.
Anybody having questions? Yes, sir. Josh. Normally, we don't take questions from the audience, but go ahead, sir.
So I guess near 100 million gallons, like, does that, could the town get more or is that?
So with the simulations we ran, we went through a, you know, iterative approach, increasing the withdrawal rates until you technically failed the, the evaluation, which means you caused more than one foot of drawdown, which intersected some of those areas that DEQ calls critical. So if you look at that map on that last page, I don't know if you have that in front of you or not. With that final simulation, it was 150 million or so gallons per year. You did create some new critical areas, and your area of impact did intersect some existing ones. So we know that that one would not have passed. The 100 million gallons per year simulation got very close to creating those two critical areas within the town. You know, you were less than, I believe, four feet away of drawdown from causing that to happen. So the exact number, you know, if, if you wanted to iron it down a little bit further, it could be a little bit more than 100, but it's not going to be very much. And, you know, just to be on the safe side, I would want to assume that at this stage, the 100 number.
If I could interject real quick. For the sake of our other council member and those that would be watching online, I just want to repeat the two questions that Josh asked. The first question was referring to whether we could utilize connecting to the county in some capacity as meeting the metric towards looking for an alternate water source. And then the question just now was if we could, if we could request a, get more than the 100 million gallons that, that the model was talking about.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question procedural. We've got a agenda item later on in the meeting agenda. Yeah, I'm asking, are we going to be able to ask questions to our representative from SandTech at that time if there, if it does go to discussion?
If he's here, yeah, we can, yeah, we can include him in on the.
I'm happy to stay.
Discussion. So yes, I'd rather do that than we sit here with.
Understood.
No problem. Anybody else? We'll move on.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. David?
So I think this contract with SandTech was created before January, when I personally came on council. But how much was this contract with SandTech to do this study, dollar-wise?
I believe it was, I believe it was $10,000.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Hear nobody else? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
We'll be looking at this in an hour. You want to hang around? Public Works Utilities Report. Anybody got anything for Josh?
Josh, on the sidewalks, I know there's some sidewalk repair going, but what about when you're walking on the sidewalk, there's so many trees and branches that are, you got a duck underneath the walk, and they're growing into the sidewalk. Whose responsibility is that? Is that supposed to be the responsibility of the homeowner of the lot?
Yes, I.
Now, how can we enforce that to clean up their, act on that, on that area? There's, when you're going down Chase Street, there's a lot of trees that I've got to duck at about two feet to get underneath of them, and they've been that way for a while.
So, so I guess complaints would go to the town manager, and then she would issue that, and we would, I guess, either go out and do it or hire someone and then bill that or.
I have had some luck getting VDOT, depending on if it's over a public right-of-way, having VDOT do some trimming. In Port Royal, I can certainly ask him, the same person does Bowling Green as well. And so if somebody brings that to my attention, I'll be happy to follow up with him.
I had one question. The underwater, we have a, just, it's categorized as several. Have we had more leaks since our special meeting that we had roughly two weeks ago?
Just, so there was saddle repairs up Route 2, and then there was a leak right back at the intersection.
Understood.
Yeah, this has been leak hell around here. Anybody else? Name's Josh. All right. Thank you, Josh. Appreciate it. Moving on, Police Department. He is, there's nobody here representing police tonight. If you have any questions, try to get with them. Jeff, Justin is out of town right now on Family Matters. Moving on to Town Administrator, Allison, Town Clerk.
I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, hear none. Move on to the consent agendas. Do I have a motion?
Well, you, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you grouped four and five. Is that correct? One was the.
I'm sorry. Well, I did, yeah. You know, Town Treasurer, Town Administrator, go ahead.
I got you.
I skipped four, but I think I said it all. You got something?
No, I just was.
Okay.
Seeing if anyone else, I'm sorry.
All right, consent agendas. Item six, seven, eight, and nine. Do I hear a motion to wrap consent agendas all into one motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
I got a motion to accept all the consent agendas, six through nine. Do I hear a second?
Hold on a second.
I got a second by Randy, first by Jeff. Any discussions, please? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Oppose? None. Motion carries. Unfinished business. Trent, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Members of council, we have AP Hill here tonight. And a few months ago, several months ago now, that we were invited to a meeting with them so that they could discuss IGSAs, which is a collaborative partnership agreement for services, material procurement, and mutual support. The town has had additional discussions with AP Hill about, about this agreement, and submitted so far some proposals, some quotes to them. And so the next step was to review the document that you have in your packet. And AP Hill is back now to see, to answer questions and to discuss future steps if town council would like to, would like to discuss it further. The town attorney has reviewed the, the document, so there might be some questions for the town attorney as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to AP Hill and the town council.
All right. Anybody here from AP Hill would like to get up and say anything? There you go.
Hey, look at that. Okay. So, good evening. Thank you for having us back tonight. We do not have any sort of formal presentation. We're just here to answer any sort of questions you may have. That's really it.
Now, this intergovernmental support agreement. Explain exactly what that is.
Sure.
So, Mayor, the intergovernmental support agreement is pretty much, it kind of acts like a contract agreement, but it's more of a formality of just establishing a partnership between 40 AP Hill and the town of Bowling Green that allows the installation to access some of the contracts and contractors that the town of Bowling Green utilizes for a variety of support services. The intergovernmental support agreement was authorized by Congress about 10 years ago. That allows DOD installations to enter into these public, public partner agreements.
Okay. So with the, just an agreement, then that's what that is, but it's not an actual 10-year binding contract with stipulations and, or what? I mean, what are we talking about?
You can enter into an agreement with, through an IGSA, it's a partnership of up to 10 years, but it can be terminated upon mutual concurrence from both parties at any time.
Okay. So it is the, a contract then?
Yes.
All right.
It acts very much like a contract. Yes, sir.
All right. Counsel, it's up to you.
What happens if we can't get any contractors that you're asking for, to supply to you? If we were to sign this and say, okay, you want this and you want that, and we try getting a local contractor to go out and do the job, and we can't get him to do it, or them to do it, then what happens?
The IGSA serves as sort of like a first of, right of first refusal. So obviously, the garrison would want to utilize the contractors that you all access. But if there is an inability for a contractor to perform a particular service, then the garrison would seek backup contractors that they have used previously. They still have a variety of contracts in place, but the goal here is to enter into a partnership with the local town and its local businesses and contractors, general contractors that are local to the area.
Can you point to the language in the agreement that says that?
That the, that 40 AP Hill would not, that they would seek their, I mean, we can look to add that if that's something that would be requested.
I think so.
It's not holding the town of Bowling Green to anything that would say Bowling Green has to perform this.
This agreement does say that. I mean, it says, if the town of Bowling Green or its contractor is unable to perform any of the services due to an occurrence beyond the reasonable control of the parties, such as acts of God, unusually severe weather, or government activities on the installation. or government activities on the installation which impede performance, the town of Bowling Green shall promptly notify the IGSA TR. It doesn't say, if you're not able to perform it, you just need to tell us and everything will be fine. It sort of says, you're going to agree to do these, you know, like a regular contract.
Got it, okay. Yeah, we can soften the language.
Thank you.
Yep.
I was talking with the people at Fort Polk, at Leedsville, and Wine.
Vernon Parish.
There you go, Vernon Parish and Wine Pine, or Rose Pine.
Rose Pine.
Thank you. And they, they said that they had done theirs, they're on their sixth year now, but they also had it written as a year-by-year contract.
Well, it does get, you have the option of renewing it each year. But because of the way that the congressional authority is written, DOD and a public partner can enter into an IGSa for up to 10 years.
Right, yeah, and that's what they were on, and they were looking forward to the next two. Because, you know, they said it was working good on their end, except one of them, he said that they wished they had gone with a contractor instead of them hiring the employees, because that was a pain for them. But, you know, other than that, it was still, everybody paid, paid well. And getting on the base, I know some people have asked about issuing on the base. I asked them about how is it, the people get on base? They said they don't, long as their driver's license, they scan their license, nothing pops up on their license, they go on through. That's all they require. So, I mean, they're laxing back from what they used to do. But they said that scan is actually a federal library scan, I mean, it goes through everything they say, so. All right, that's all I have, I'll leave it up to everybody else.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, David.
So, no, no one is a bigger supporter of Fort AP Hill than I am. And it's my time as mayor, you know, I tried to strengthen that relationship. Unfortunately, I just, I can't support entering into an agreement right now just because I think we've got a lot of other issues going on that we need to get under control. You know, the business person in me likes a lot of the stuff I've heard about this program, but from a standpoint of, I don't even think we have a staff right now that can really dig in, assign somebody to it, to dig into it, understand it, and make the most of it. I just, I just think right now, I wish this, I wish this wasn't presented to us right this second, because I just don't think we can take it on our plate and be successful with it. I like the concept, I just think it's a bad time for us.
Okay, thank you, David. Anybody else? Do I hear a motion for anything? What's y'all's flavor here?
I can make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we do not sign the IGSa between the town of Bowling Green and Fort AP Hill.
All right, I have a motion on the floor from Mr. Hooly that we do not accept the IGA proposal that's in front of us.
I'll second that.
I got it second by who?
Me.
Valerie, I got a second by Valerie. Open for discussions.
I have a tendency to agree with David, it's just a bad time right now. I feel like we have a lot of issues that we need to deal with. I like the idea, I think that it could be very beneficial for both parties. But just at this time, we have a lot of things we're trying to get worked out. And I don't feel like we have staff time to deal with just the things that we need, the critical items we need to deal with now. Maybe next year, we'll be in a lot better position to look at it. So I'm hoping we'll have an opportunity in the future to, you know, talk about this again.
Thank you.
I'll just make the same sentiments and leave it at that.
All right. No other comments? I'll take a roll vote. David?
I, I vote for Mr. Hooly's motion, aye.
Aye, that'll be an aye, okay. Arthur?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
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 Gene?
Aye.
Okay. Our motion carries that we do not accept this provision at this time. We are very sorry. If it's still something available, we can look at it next year, maybe we can revisit it then.
All right.
Appreciate it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, so much.
So much of your time, I appreciate it. All right, next amendment to existing policy to allow sewer water to the extension plotted lots in Maury for selling water, excuse me, Maury Heights, section one, two, and three, that's still on the agenda. What are we doing with it?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to recuse myself from any discussion or voting based on recommendation from our town attorney.
All right, okay, so noted.
So.
Dan has been reclusive. Ma'am?
Mr. Mayor, due to the limited water in the current permit, the town adopted a policy in October of 2022 that prevented the sale of water to lots outside the town limits. And so we did have a request from Mr. Galian that you have before you. He has a building permit and would like to, to have water served to him. He is, his lot is in Maury Heights, too. And town council did discuss this at a work session. They discussed it at a special called meeting on April 20th. And there was a vote not to allow it. It is back, one of the requests from town council was to discuss this with the, with the county. The county did come to the, to the work session and there was a discussion. And so in order to bring this back, there would need to be, one of the three that voted against would need to bring it back to, for reconsideration at this meeting. The item is on your agenda, it needs to be removed if there is, if that doesn't occur. But in talking to the town attorney, council may, the town attorney said, stated, I believe, that if, if there was a motion that was significantly different, that there, that also potentially could, could change this, and there could be a vote. So if, if you wanted to talk further, the town attorney is here. And, and so I'll turn it back over at this time.
All right. Mr. Attorney, what's, what's the deal? If one of the three doesn't want to change their vote, revisit it, then how can we, another motion, it has to be significantly different? If so, how different, what, I think, because I'm thinking somebody might want to bring it up.
Ms. Pynchon, what are the changes from the special meeting?
The changes to the policy?
Uh huh.
Oh, okay.
To the resolution.
So is that what it is that needs to be significantly different? Is the resolution, okay, I misunderstood what you said, it's not the motion rather than it's the resolution. So the resolution, the changes are in it, that, that the, whereas it has come to the attention of the Bowling Green Town Council that there are five undeveloped parcels in the Maury Heights subdivision, and then they're identified by number?
Wasn't that in the last one?
Oh, yes, it was in the last one.
I didn't see anything substantially different, that's why I asked.
So I guess the question is, what would need to be changed on this to make it substantially different? If, if we removed the five lots, but made it one lot for, due to a building permit having been previously issued, and it is for the one lot, is that substantially different?
I think you just got to revisit this over again when the other ones won't, if we don't include them somehow. I mean, you can make that a whereas by itself and then add the other ones in in the future consideration.
Right, if that's, makes it substantially different, then that can be stricken.
Can ever make into that one particular, and others can still be considered in a future time.
I just don't know that it makes it really that different. I mean, the substance is the same. I do agree it's one lot instead of five, but perhaps somebody who voted on the other side would like to bring it forward just for the purpose of discussion?
Not hearing any?
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, David.
May I ask a question? So I understand the moratorium. I don't, I don't feel like somehow there was a disconnect in communicating that to the county, because obviously the county issued a building permit. They were under the impression that there was a connection there or responsibilities to provide water there to that earliest, oldest Maury Heights subdivision. So my question is, is, is the moratorium, I know we've spent $10,000 to study it and we've got a report back, and is the moratorium going to be in place forever? And, or is it something we're going to look, work to fix and raise our limits so that we are not just going to be a town of stagnation forever? I, I feel really bad for this, this person in Maury Heights who had a meter there and we were supplying, it was agreed that we would supply water to the original Maury Heights. And I just think there was a disconnect there with the county and, and this, this house is now under roof. I, I don't know the legality of all this revisiting it with the people that made the motion or voted it for it or against it, whatever the case is, but I think we need to look at it. It's two things, are we happy with the moratorium being in place forever? Then we do need to strain at all of these little things that come forward. If, if the moratorium, if we're working to get that lifted and get our limits raised and get back to normal, quote unquote. I think we've got a real issue here with this, with this, this, this built, this person that's built a house in good faith, moving forward with the county through their permitting process. And then obviously, the county didn't know to tell them, oh, oh, you don't have water. So I really think we need to relook at this again, if, however that's possible.
I'm in agreeance with you, David. It also says here on the fifth line down on the resolution, says, whereas until StanTech has performed their contracted work, which they did, the ability to acquire additional water capacity remains unknown. So I mean, you know, we've hired them, it's even in here that we hired them to, to come back with adequate water, and they have. So the resolution has already provided one part. And it used to be in here, I can't find it, where it said it would be up to council in the future to undo this whole resolution. It's not a permanent deal, it was only during the times that we are in this water, water crisis.
Well, when did the county issue the building permit, before or after our moratorium?
It was after.
Hang on a second, we'll find out. I got the man here, I think, that knows the answer. Stick your name, sir.
Director of planning, Caroline County. Mr. Stork, we issued the permit after the moratorium was adopted by town council. And the permit issuance was one that simply slipped through the crack on our part.
But did, did the county just assume that there was an agreement for the old Maury Heights? I'm not talking about two or three or whatever, whatever, whatever iteration it's in now, but the original old Maury Heights where they had the lines, the meters in place? Was it y'all's understanding that that was kind of grandfathered like other water that we sell outside the?
I, I don't know that we felt that it was grandfathered, to be honest with you. You know, there were discussions about the, the capacity that was available for, and we were specifically talking about Maury Heights, section three. And I think it was simply a matter that staff didn't take it, or county staff didn't take into consideration Maury Heights one and two and thought that that was built out as well and didn't, and didn't go back and research that further.
Thank you.
Mr. Stork, to answer the question completely.
Thank you.
I didn't give the, I did not give the policy to the county until a week ago. And so they, they did not have that information. As soon as I gave it to them, they re, they changed their procedures and, and that was immediate.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
I'm changing the resolution.
All right, we're on standby. Anybody got else they want to say about it, discussions while we get it updated?
I don't really like shooting myself in the foot because of what side of this I was actually on, but Andrea, was this really fair to those that prevail on that motion to be continuing discussion of this like this? We've kind of spent almost 10 minutes on it already.
It is not fair is in the eye of the council. It is generally accepted under Roberts rules that there should not be discussion of a matter until there's a motion and a second properly before council.
I, I would then request that the meeting continue on, seeing that there is extensive discussion in the last meeting and the work session before.
So what does that mean for this issue? Is it going to be brought up later or?
I, I mean, we were told that it needed to be removed from the agenda unless three of the council members overturned their initial vote. So, I mean, is this fair to every other motion we've had? I mean, that's, it was.
Would the council like for me to try to present a resolution that would be significantly different? If so, I would ask for a vote on that. Otherwise, it would appear that you should just move forward with the agenda. If that's what council wants me to do.
Council, would you all be happy with that? Just, you know, she gets it printed off and we come back to it?
I, I would like to know what substantially different would look like, so I would be interested.
That's one. David? Gene? Arthur? Valerie?
I just, I just have a question for our town attorney. What is our liability as far as this person, this lot owner taking legal action against us? Do we have any liability there?
No.
All right, I'm hearing none, that nobody wants to do anything except move on.
Well, I, well, you didn't hear me correctly. I I I would like to revisit it, but if we can't, I don't. I just don't want to go on and say not hearing anything, cause I am, I think we created a predicament with this one person and I, you know, but.
Well, I've I've got two that do.
I agree with David, we need to make a decision on it.
I've got three that agree and I got three that disagree.
Correct? I I'll say this again, there is extensive discussion in the last meeting, which was, okay, and then there's a work session. And I I'm just gonna say it, if you weren't in attendance, I I'm sorry, I mean. We discussed plans, processes to move forward to to correct this and I clearly stated. My intention is not personally not to deny water to anyone that's requesting it. But we've we've come to a a time that we're in great concern of the status of our utilities. Yes, we we're making, and it's known to everyone, um, efforts to try to correct that. But we have an emergency repair and discussion that's coming up here, so. Again, I'm gonna request either we move forward with the agenda or the town attorney gives us guidance on this.
Sir, I think it's council's pleasure whether you want to address this topic again. There's a procedural issue that if you want to bring it back, it has to meet certain criteria. I'm happy to um attempt to craft a a resolution that would alleviate that procedural issue. But it's not clear to me that that's something that council wants to do.
Well, I've got uh so far, three people that do, I got Randy, you on that, right? All right, we got three do and three don't. Uh, Dan can't participate and, yes, ma'am.
Relation to David's question, there's no liability here. Is there any potential future liability from others that may come after us this?
I said no.
I didn't hear it, sorry, I thought I heard head shake.
All right, the answer was no to that, sorry.
And if I could, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Question, is there any potential liability for past decisions made by the council on water connections to our utility system? To come back and hold council liable?
I don't think so. Um, I will say that as a general matter. And then the caveat that the what would be important that a court would look at would be the entire history. And the history is a bit zigging and zagging, but I I think as a general proposition, no, I don't think so.
Mr. Mayor, I just, as a, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I I just, um, you know, as a matter of fairness, I'm I'm trying to put myself in the position of this homeowner. Whose house is under roof. I I know we've got a lot going on right now on our plate with, you know, huge repairs. But this this not issuing water to him is not because we have so many leaks, it's because of a more. Form we put in place that's after around what the issue was we had with water and how to deal with that. In fairness to this gentleman, he's he's done everything right, he's in the county, he was issued a permit. He was under the understanding, the county was under the understanding. If anyone's driven down there, I drove down there this morning and I mean, it's under roof. What, as a fellow human being or fellow citizen of our county, what what do we tell him right now? I I don't know if he's got a construction loan or if he's paying for this by himself. Do we say, you know, I understand the procedural issues and I know we've got a lot on our plate, but. We can, we can juggle more than one or two balls in the air and still, um, I don't want to say make exceptions, but. In all fairness, how do we address this this one situation that's kinda not our fault, but not really the his fault either? Or do we care?
Mr. Stork, it it already had a vote to, it already had a failed vote to provide that water, so that that was basically a decision made at the last meeting.
Right, and there was a letter, if I'm reading my packet, there was a letter written again to us to rethink it. And we we brought it up tonight, so we're just talking about it. I mean, obviously, if it takes three people that voted against or voted for it to, I I understand the procedural part of it, but. And I understand y'all had a, we had a call meeting and and I wasn't in attendance for it and I appreciate all of that, but. We can't even talk about it, we can't even revisit it because we've decided in the past, I just don't understand that.
All right, um. We're gonna move on with this, but first we're going to uh push it, see if I can get a vote to push it to the end of the agenda tonight. Where we have time to get a new resolution printed out and then we can go from there at such time if another motion wants to be made to approve it or disapprove it. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Make the motion to extend it to later.
I have a motion to extend item eleven.
Is that a motion to direct the the town attorney to attempt to prepare a significantly different resolution?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Move it to item sixteen if I got a second.
I second that.
I got a second for David. Did you get that? Okay, uh, any discussion? I'll take a roll vote. Jean?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Dan, I'm sorry, no Dan, Valerie? Randy?
Yes.
Arthur?
No.
David?
Yes.
We have four yeses and two nos, we will pick this up again with a new resolution at item number sixteen. Moving on to item number thirteen, new businesses, authorization to appropriate ARPA funds for the. Anticipates of bid for emergency repairs for sewer and water system, basically the sewer system on Main Street. I did? Oh, I did, I circled it, I'm messing up tonight big time. Item twelve, approval to apply for groundwater withdrawal permit, new business.
Mr. Mayor, you have before you a proposal from Stan Tech that I requested.
Yep.
And.
I would just ask that if there's a motion to approve it, that it be subject to final review and approval by the town attorney, I have a couple of tweaks.
I got a motion by Valerie to uh allow the town attorney to look over the.
To approve it.
To approve it?
Subject to.
Subject to final review or approval by the town attorney and a second by uh Jeff. Do I have any discussions at this time for the matter?
That's gonna be if there's a motion on the initial action item to move forward, correct? The town attorney is requesting to have final approval and edits of it.
After we approve it, yes.
Yes, I'm just asking, you can go ahead and approve it, I can make a couple of tweaks and we can keep moving.
Okay, but then we wouldn't know what those edits are, or we will, or?
Um, one of them is that it has in there that we will indemnify Stan Tech, we're not allowed to indemnify them by law and. I was also going to inquire whether they might be um amenable to including some not to exceed fee amounts. Just so that the council would have some control over money, you know, so you would know what you were spending.
Okay, I mean, I personally would like to know that what I voted for is what I voted for and not edited or changed after, but that's me. So I'll just state that for the record.
Any discussions for the motion that's on the floor?
Well, Mr. Mayor, what is the motion on the floor?
Motion on the floor is to approve the groundwater withdrawal permit application with the with the availability for the uh attorney to make a couple of tweaks. Uh, one being a cap of uh value cap and the other is a dimin- diminut- Indemnity clause that uh we cannot do by law, take that out.
And I have not provided any comments to Stan Tech because I I didn't know if council would want to go forward with this or not, so. If council does, I'm happy to do it and then to bring the final contract back, whatever you would like.
So Andrea, is the only two issues you have are the two that were stated?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, it is discussion only.
I mean, the indemnification has to come out because we can't agree to that, we're not allowed to by the constitution, I mean, the.
Well, do we?
Not to exceed fee amounts is.
Do we want to draw the motion in and just keep it under discussion and have Andrea look it over first, or you want to keep it going? Okay, all right, all right, so we have a a motion on the floor? Discussion, having that.
The motion on the floor is just revolving around the edits, correct, not the actual movement to move forward on renewing, approving the renewal process?
It is.
It is approving it.
It is approving the agreement.
So, okay, well, then, yes, I've got plenty of discussion. I I thought that the the motion that Mr. Eggman made was to discuss the edits that the town attorney was requesting to make. After the initial decision was either approved or denied, so I'm I'm incorrect in comprehending that.
You're incorrect.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's to improve.
So then we can discuss about the renewal process, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so um I guess a few things in here that uh Stan Tech states. The, I'll start with number three, the alternate water source analysis, so um we do understand that the town attorney. I mean, I'm sorry, the town manager provided that letter to DEQ, so that's good. We have also provided that letter to the county showing that we would like to partake in that partnership. I just feel that a decision from the county um may be not by the time. We uh get this, I guess, permit through and if I'm incorrect, someone please let me know, but I'm. Understanding that that process that they've engaged in and provided support to DEQ could take years of planning and I know that they've already placed financial obligations. To to study that and they're and they're trying to move forward as much as they can, but. Uh, I guess what I'm getting at is if we move forward with the DEQ renewal process for our town withdrawal permit. This is a key portion of that and if the members of council that were on here recall when DEQ came. They said it would probably be likely that for the town to get an increasing water capacity. That we would need to to have an alternate water source required on our permit. And so I understand this is analysis, so that's just one one topic there.
Am I allowed to comment on that?
Sure, sure.
If you want any feedback on that.
Y- yes, sir, that's fine.
That alternate water source analysis is different than the alternate water source requirement that I was mentioning being attached to your permit. This, through the permit application process, that alternate water source analysis that you're referring to is a requirement for you to demonstrate to DEQ. That what you're proposing to do is the best source of water for you at the given time for X, Y, and Z reasons. You do not have to have a, that 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 piece of the application is not where you would um provide or necessary. You would not have to provide your plans for obtaining an alternate source at that time. That alternate water source analysis is just identifying the other options that might be available to you and why they are not feasible for you right now. If those are options that are feasible potentially following years of investigations by the county through other parties, um, completion of their process. That's something that should be mentioned there, but it's not something that you would be held to committing to at that stage.
Understood, thank you for that clarification. The other things I I guess I could direct them towards you, the information request for the town. So the number of water system connections by month over the past 15 years would need to complement this renewal process?
Yes.
Okay, and we.
If available, that would be helpful information.
If available, okay, and I understand that these are all if available, but uh water sold by month over the past 15 years. Split by categories of residential, commercial, and industrial. And then are there plans for water system infrastructure changes over the next 15 years? And then possible projected growth of new developments, developer plans, agreements, et cetera. And then have there been any significant water leaks over the past 15 years, if so, when? So I just want to make sure that those are six requirements documented in here that would be good to complement our renewal process to DEQ. So I think that's a huge undertaking and we discussed some of that in the in the work session specifically regarding the location of those lines. The other thing that I'll bring up that I brought up previously when we discussed this a few months back was. Uh, we're doing this multiple years in advance, so uh the renewal um on that permit, and I understand when you spoke last time, sir. It could take, you said roughly two years to go through that process, so we are uh in 2023 and that permit's through 2028, so we're roughly. And I gave the example that we're getting our inspection sticker on our vehicle in six months instead of every 12 years, so. We're uh, we're leaving $10,000 of permit costs on the table here. Holding our fingers hoping that DEQ adjusts and increases the capacity for the withdrawal permit. And I understand we we did receive a favorable um report back from Stan Tech, but. I I just, uh, where we're at and maybe I'm completely missing it and incorrect, but I just think it's gonna be tough to increase that. Limit that we already have.
Okay, anybody else?
It says on here you provide a water conservation and management plan. If the town is in the process of doing something like that, possibly for insertion in our comp plan. Would this trump anything that we do as well or we would, it would be collaborated together?
It would be a collaborative process, that water conservation management plan becomes a part of your permit, but it's something that you are entirely responsible or. Our consultant is entirely responsible for preparing and collaboration with the town. So anything, there are some standard items that DEQ likes to see in those and there are some items that are required to be in there, but they're not very. They're not very specific, generally speaking, and there's a lot of room for the town to be able to come up with their own criteria for evaluating. You know, opt- opportunities for conserving water, reducing leaks, um, they're all, we always emphasize it's important, it's a collaborative process. Because anything that gets put in there is something they are committing to, so it's gotta be things that are feasible for you to do. But yes, it's it's a collaborative process that the town's involved in picking, you know, what that looks like.
Thank you.
So if there's, if there's something that's been worked on or something in progress already, that can already, that can be implemented into this uh permit application.
Yeah, Brian, I have a question.
Sure.
You know, as you're going through the permitting process, I mean, are you preparing the entire permit, you submit it and then they either accept or reject? Or is it something that you're working back and forth with DEQ to maybe modify the application to make it more favorable or can you? Can you kind of walk walk us through that process?
Sure, so the the first step in the application process is going to be a pre-application meeting with DEQ. So at that stage, we would probably present the results of that preliminary work that we um conducted that, you know, I've presented to you uh tonight and previous nights. And walk through the reason that you're applying for a new permit right now. You know, your your initial justification for that, we'll talk about the work that we had done. And it's it's an opportunity for you to describe to DEQ why you're doing what you're doing, but also get feedback from DEQ on, you know, their thoughts on your approach. You know, is this feasible from their initial first look at this, are there other complicating factors that we're not aware of yet that DEQ knows? You know, maybe there is some very large proposed withdrawal nearby that came about that they want to bring to your attention. So that's a, that's the first step and it's a formal oper- meeting and it's a formal, it's an opportunity to understand each other and know where DEQ is coming from when they're. and know where DEQ is coming from when they're looking at this. So once that is, once that meeting is held, we will go through the, prepare the application. DEQ will not conduct any review of any part of it until the application fee is submitted to DEQ, which is, you know, at the middle of the application. So that said, throughout the process, if there are questions for DEQ or items that we need to discuss with them, they're very open to that. But formally, they will not make a decision on any piece of it until the entire application is submitted in its entirety and the application fee is paid. So the, you know, the first, the first step is that meeting, and we can talk and understand where they think they're coming from, but they will not truly know until the application is completely submitted.
Okay.
If I can add, I have one comment to that.
Comments, sir.
Once the application is submitted and they begin their review process, it is not a yes or no answer that comes straight to you. If there is something in there that DEQ looks at and thinks, you know, this amount is not sustainable for some reason, or, you know, they do their modeling and something has changed since we've done it and there is a different result, or they just know that there's, you know, they're concerned about the regional water source. They will come to you and discuss it. And, you know, there are, there are times when we've done that and had to go back to the, go back to the justification section, find some more details, you know, look for some more evidence of growth that's coming, do some more projections of population, et cetera, and in some cases, reduce the amount of water you're requesting. So it's not usually a, you do this entire thing and then DEQ stamps it yes or no. There is a time there to defer negotiations.
I got a quick one. Did we go through all of the funds initially appropriated for this, or do we got to go over? Do we have any leftover? How'd that end up going?
I do not have the updated budget information in front of me, but last I had looked, which was last week, we were under budget. There's not a lot remaining, but we are under budget and on, on track for our original contract.
I, I don't recall what council approved towards that, you know, amount. I got, I guess, one specific question. Does surface water impact groundwater in any capacity?
Yes, in many situations. In, in your particular situation with the aquifer that you're pulling from, the impact of surface water is minimal because of how deep and it's called a confined aquifer. So it's a deep underground system that's separated from land surface by hundreds of feet of material. And some of that material are what are called confining units. They're very fine, which is, you know, it limits the flow of water between the different units of sediments. So given how deep the Potomac Aquifer is here, which is what you're pulling from, and the fact that it's confined, the, you know, surface water impacts on that aquifer are, you know, thousands of years in duration. So anything that happens tomorrow and a surface water source in the county is going to have a negligible impact on the groundwater source that you're using.
But it would take a while. So what I'm getting at is, you know, the, the, the overall master plan here, I'll call it, is to remove water out of the Rappahannock River, you know, and that's the, the county's goal there to, to work on that effort. So I didn't know if they say, hey, we're DEQ, you know, and this is all just a made up situation, hey, go ahead and remove a million gallons out of that, and they give them the, the capacity to do that, or whatever it may be. Would that impact our renewal process, knowing that that alternate water source that's groundwater is now being withdrawn for consumption throughout county and town use? And then there's still the groundwater there, but I didn't know if that would impact it in any capacity.
So you're saying if the, if the, if water is starting to withdrawn from the Rappahannock, will that affect this permit?
Yes.
Not directly. DEQ is generally liking the idea of pulling, in most situations. There are cases where certain rivers are over withdrawn as well, and there, there are limits that have to be held for flows rivers also. But in a lot of situations, it is preferable to pull from river sources than groundwater sources. Just because, you know, more water is being pulled from a river does not mean necessarily that there is, you know, less or more water to be available in the groundwater source. It's not a direct relationship. Just from, from DEQ's perspective, it is seen as favorable usually to transition from groundwater to surface water just because surface water in most cases is way, is much more plentiful in this area. I'm sorry if that doesn't answer your.
No, it does. I was just curious about how the, the two went together in a renewal process.
Okay. You all ready to vote on this then?
So.
Go ahead.
I guess financially, we've got to come up with a number, correct? Because I'm reading here also that.
What are we looking at, Allison?
That they're.
Money wise for this cop, for this.
It's 25, 383, right? And then there's a clause in here under closing that this does not include the payment of the $9,000 permit fee to DEQ. So then we're at $34,000 total.
Now, is that 20 something above the, the 10 we already paid, right?
For the initial. The 10 we paid was for the water study.
That's correct, but there's, they're under budget, so we'll apply the remainder of probably a few thousand to a couple thousand, maybe.
All right. So we could be down to 20. Was it now?
It's, so it's 25 for the quote.
25, okay.
There's a $9,000 DEQ fee.
That goes DEQ totally separate, right?
That is separate.
So we could be around 22, 23,000 additional with the under budget that we have now on the initial 10 grand. Okay, all right. We just don't know how much under budget.
I, I can, I can inform Allison on where we stand on budget beginning next week. I'll, I'll add one, one final thing here is whatever requested revisions you do have, if we could send them our way, I'll have to run up our, our legal chain as well.
If you can just give me that contact information, I'm happy to call tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
All right, we got a motion?
I just want to clarify the financial obligation again, one more time. So there's 25, there's nine, there's 10 already paid. And we're losing 10 by doing this process five years early. So we're, we're, we're close to $55,000. Just to.
And we're, and go ahead.
That's why I was hoping to put, you know, something in there that says, okay, you know, we don't anticipate that it's going to exceed this amount. However, if it does, notice will be provided to the town, you know, something like that so that it's not just
A way.
unlimited.
The money law, the money that we'd lose for, for applying early is, has already been paid. But yes, in effect, we would, we wouldn't be paying out an additional 10,000, but, but we would lose it because we would lose several years.
We, we, yeah, because we're applying at the, say, 50% mark.
Yeah, three years early, I think.
It's five, 2023, and the renewal is in 2028.
Yeah, but we won't get the permit probably till 25. So you're losing like three years off the permit.
I, I know, but the reason you're applying for it, because you need it.
Need it to get better housing.
We won't even allow somebody that's under roof to, I mean, I, I, I didn't see how you can look at it any other way.
I agree.
Well, I'll, I'll bring it up now. Since we brought that up, we, we did receive another request to, to tap into the water system. We denied that, and they went to a well. So I'll leave that there, too.
All right, we have a motion. We're going to do a roll call. Can you read the motion better again so everybody understands, please?
The motion is to approve moving forward with the second phase of a contract with Stan Tech, subject to final review and approval by the town attorney.
We have the, the motion was made by? Who made it? Jeff?
Valerie and I seconded.
Okay, and, okay. So Valerie seconded.
Mr. Hagman?
No, you, you proved.
Then you.
Me that I made the motion? I made the motion, didn't I?
Yeah. Randy made the motion. Yeah, Randy made the motion, Jeff seconded. All right, we'll do a roll call.
Because the question, okay, maybe I'm, I'm sorry.
Who did you write down?
I thought.
Who'd you write down? Who made it? Yeah. And Jeff?
I guess we both said something at the same time.
Yeah, could have. Sorry, what? Gene?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Arthur?
No.
David?
Yes.
We got six yeses and one no. Motion carries. We'll be getting back with you with the contract and attorney will be.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work. All right. Now we can move on to 13. Authorization to appropriate APR, ARP funds and the acceptance of bids for emergency repairs for sewer and water system. Like I said, I'm not sure much about the water system, except for maybe what they run into when they dig in, but it's basically for sewer on Main Street. In case some of you don't know it, but I think everybody does. We had a major collapse sewer line right there by the stoplight. And it's all backed up and won't allow it to come through. So we got about, what's it, 400 feet? Yeah, about 400 feet, we got a tear up. It'll be done probably during daytime with road closures and, you know, probably about a week or so. We get it done. And don't know when to start data or anything, but we're going to discuss it, appropriate funds. So council, how do you want to start with this? It's your discussion. Allison?
Council, there's two possibilities that I've proposed. One is to allocate ARPA funds for whatever the bid that you choose is. The lowest bid was 300. And so you could appropriate ARPA funds for that. Or there is a suggestion to, if you would like, to do pump and haul at approximately $650 for, weekly for that particular site. Then we could request USDA for, request a, a grant and a loan. And that would take a, a few months to, to work through the process. But there are emergency repairs that need to be made. And so maybe somebody else has a suggestion, but those are the two that I have for you.
Allison, so that would be roughly around $11,000, and I ran that out to four months, right? For pump and haul, just to give a figure. But not talking about the sewer, do we have a total of how much the water repairs alone have cost over the last, I'll just say, 30 days?
I believe we can run that for you so I'm more accurate. But my recollection of what I've signed is approximately, do you remember about a hun, uh, $100,000?
Understood.
I can actually go get the.
I just ballpark, I was just trying to understand.
Do you have another number? Yep, I think that's it.
Thank you.
And if council would also appropriate that money. So there's a formal vote on it. That would be much appreciated. So you want us to accept the bids as well? So it's a two-part, not vote on a selection because you haven't gone through a process, so just accept these bids? You certainly do not have to do that. We can. If you want to, us, it's staff to do that. Staff can do that. Yeah, I'm just, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly because I just had some concerns. And I know, I guess Andrew can help with this. It was an emergency, but are we required to put this on the Department of General Services if we are not listing this in a newspaper?
No, you mean for procurement?
Correct.
No, we're not subject to procurement.
Okay, yeah. Just want to make sure of that.
Now, the, the bids, we're, y'all are still going over them, right? Because I know we looked at them the other day. So, I mean, nothing should be decided on them until we compare apples to apples, no matter what the price is, until we make sure that everything is legit on the bids so that we don't get stiffed on something.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, we don't need to be deciding on that tonight. We just need to, I guess, decide on what we're going to do with funding this and the, I guess, how about all those water repairs? Do we have the fund for that in the, in the department, or are we going to have to pull that out of ARPA?
We have the funding for that, but we, pulling it out of the ARPA funds, that is one thing that ARPA funds can be used for.
Right, but we'll have to appropriate it to be done, right?
Right, then you don't have to use your reserve.
Reserve fund, right. But even if we do use ver, reserve, do we have to appropriate since it's so much or not? I mean, because we are taking a lot out of one and going into another line item.
Could I, I think it would maybe be easier if we reached into the ARPA funding to, to, to cover the water maybe and/or the sewer. I think there's enough in there to, to cover that here, what staff's proposing. And I think, and maybe I'm understanding incorrectly, but I think they either are requesting that we make a decision on if we're going to go the USDA route or if we're going to go the ARPA fund route. If, if, if that's.
That's correct.
Okay, and then if we go the ARPA fund route, I'd almost say break it up. You know, we've got the, the sewer and the water, but it's here 500, but I, I don't know. I mean, that's why I was asking about the waters specifically versus the sewer, trying to
Right, yeah.
Separate them.
I mean, I'd like, I'd like to see us look for grants and/or USDA. I mean, I think ARPA, I mean, certainly we know that's kind of the fallback. We know how we can fund that. But it seems like to me that with the pump and haul, we have the ability to look for those. You know, Josh, had you looked into any of that yet?
So I, I reached out to USDA. I got a reply back late this afternoon. So the process for it would take probably seven to 10 months. They did state that the town would be eligible. They can't guarantee it, that they would still be available, you know, up to a 75% grant. I wasn't here with the last sewer collapse in Maury. Another part of that option could be, I, I believe they financed it through the bank and then refinanced it as part of a larger project, but I could be incorrect on that. But I.
I mean, does that make you ineligible for grant funding then?
No, I, I could check with Cindy because I believe they did the project, they financed it through the bank, and then refinanced it through the USDA as part of that, as, as another funding. So I don't know if that'll affect the grant or if, 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 like, if you get a loan for, you know, X amount, if you refinance it with the USDA, if it's, you'll be provided grant money or if it's just a loan for X amount to cover what you already spent. So I, I would.
I mean, is this something that we can cover in, when we go through the budget work session?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, something we could, I mean, me personally, I mean, I, you know, if ARPA funds are the way we need to go, I, I'm fine with that. But, I mean, I think looking into these other grant opportunities and USDA grant slash funding, I think we really need to make sure we really look into that. And you're saying you have.
Yes, yeah, a little bit. As far as we would still be eligible, you know, for up to 75%, it would take seven to 10 months. And the reason I would look into it is because we still have the other kind of partial collapse on the other section of Main Street. So it's kind of, you know, if you're already spending, you know, a certain amount of money, you can look at the entire project.
I mean, are we able to include some of that, you know, the slip lining into that?
Yeah, the engineering report, we're looking to, you know, there's options of either slip lining, replacing.
You're saying we already did that with the, the PER?
The PR did not. It was just a replacement. Yeah, so.
I, I would also like to add that if you are looking at this through the budget. looking at this through the budget, then there is a concern for the fact that you have seventy-year-old lines, and you're one of the lowest rates in the state. And so sewer is, you may want to consider raising the sewer rates to pay, be obvious, it seems like pretty obvious that if you have seventy-year-old lines and you're one of the lowest in the state, that there should be some type of change.
So-
What, what do we, go ahead.
So the, acronym-wise, it was the P E R study, right? That was first, that was twenty nineteen, twenty twenty timeframe. We voted on that seventy-five percent USDA grant that was proposed, or I should say presented by you, Mr. Erby. We denied that because of having to raise taxes and we couldn't afford it at that time, right? So we went through a budget overview in our work session where we potentially need to raise it fifteen, if not thirty, and that's excluding this conversation. So I'm back to the same concern. One, how is that seventy-five percent USDA grant still available if we pass the deadline? And then, two, how are we going to afford it if we couldn't afford it five months ago? How are we going to afford to get another USDA grant, raise more taxes? I, I just, I don't see it, I mean, I'm not saying we're going to be able to do it all, but ARPA's no tax raised to our citizens USDA is, and it's going to be required, so I'll just leave it.
Let me tackle that. Well, I'll, I'll take care of the first part, so we're not using the engineering report that we already did, this would be a new engineering report. So instead of doing everything that was encompassed in the last one, you would just, you know, do the, either do this section and the other section, or say, hey, we want to do all of Main Street throughout to Ambrotus. It, it would be your decision on what sections you would want to do. It wouldn't be the wastewater plant and all the lines and everything, it would just be, it was, it's a new engineering report, a new study of, you know, either, you know, slip lining or replacing and evaluating those options and the cost of those options. And then it would be a new grant application, that, that's why the process would take, you know, again, the seven to ten months, because you're going through the, a brand-new process.
Understood.
Also, Mr. Langford is here, and he has graciously offered to accept payments over time. I don't know the exact terms yet, but he is here and and willing to do that for us.
And here's one thing about the USDA, I mean, I'm all for what we can, but like Arthur said, you know, we were at what, what are we paying now, monthly? Loans?
Wasn't close to forty thousand?
Yeah, I was going to say, it's like forty or something, or is that with the other?
Eighteen thousand, eighteen, for, eighteen thousand per month.
That's for both, or all three USDA loans, or all, you know, all two, or what, I mean, it's, because I know we went through this, and it was somewhere there, there was forty thousand dollars in there somewhere.
Thank you.
It may have been forty with the one we were anticipating, and that's where we couldn't afford it.
The other, the other thing is, we haven't started paying yet on the water lines that we got the USDA loan for, so that's where the additional money is going to be coming in, is when we start paying that one for the water line project, that's now being looked at for next year.
That, that would be us paying out, right? Not money.
Now, be paying more out.
Yeah, we're going to be paying more out, not-
Right, that's what I said, so you're eighteen now, so then you'll have that loan coming in to pay for it too, when that hits. All right, so then if we do another one, you know, you're, you're back up to thirty-something thousand, forty thousand dollars a year, a month that we're paying out.
And the other, sir? I'm saying, I think you're higher than that, but, you know, you don't have any choice.
I know we don't.
What I'm saying, right now, we just have a four-hundred-foot section that failed.
It's got to get done.
And we have, you know, that's a fraction of everything that could potentially fail, I mean, I think if you don't start looking at things now, it's really going to be expensive, I mean, I, we really need to be serious about this.
I agree, and that's why one of the things that's going to hurt is our audits. We don't get on top of our audits, and we're not going to be able to apply for these grants and stuff, so, you know, I'm just saying there's hurdles in the way that can hurt us from getting any sooner. But, I mean, it's just, we have to do something, because it's got to be fixed, it'd cost us, ten months, it'd cost us how much in pumping up fees? That we got to come out of our pocket with?
Uh, no, wait, yeah, so you're looking at eleven thousand, you're looking at eighteen thousand for seven months, and then you're looking at close to twenty-some thousand, twenty, it was about twenty-six, I think, I just had it up here.
Mr. Mayor, can I interrupt real quick?
For ten months.
We, we, we lost Mr. Stork, there's a bad storm out there.
I just was texting with him and asked if he wanted-
Okay. But I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with any, I'm just laying facts out of what we got, and we've already, you know, we have no other way of generating revenue into town, except for taxes. If anybody else tell me anything else, and, you know, water hookups, get more water hookups, that brings in, you know, two, I know two projects out there that was going to bring in over a million dollars in availability fees that we turned down. So I'm saying, yes, we need to do it, but we got to get income somewhere-
That's-
-to, to do this.
I'd speak on that if I could, that, that's a one-time income, I mean, you don't get that over twenty years, so we're looking at expenses for twenty years with, you're counting on one income for twelve, eighteen months, I mean, that's-
I'm counting on one income to come in and fix repairs that will last because they're new. All that's going to be new out there, and all is new now. What's in town does not.
I don't know what changed-
People are going to suffer.
Five months ago when we couldn't afford it, now we're, I, I don't know, I don't, I don't have a solution, I can't think of one, but it's a crisis, that's why I was trying not to spend any money before we figure this out, but that, that's a done deal.
We have to try to keep looking forward at all times, we can't look behind us, and we can't stand still. Stand still, look what happens, see what happens.
You, you're right about that, but we, we just spent money knowing that we had over a half-million-dollar to three-quarter-million-dollar expense ahead of us, which I think, personally, again, my opinion, that we should have figured out the crisis first before spending other money excessively, but-
All right, so,
I mean, can you come back with- I mean, I'd like you to come back at our next budget meeting, where we have, you know, a little more information on, you know, USDA, what can we do? Are there any grants that we can help? Because not only are, I, I think you need to only look at the, the small section that we need to repair now, but what are our, what's our other critical infrastructure? You know, we know we have a lot that we need to do, but what are those critical components that we really need to address here in the next couple of years? Or next couple of months, you know, what, you know what I mean? I think that's what we need to have a good handle on, and if it's a P E R that we need in order to investigate that, I'm assuming there's a grant for the P E R payment?
Yeah, there's a, I mean, there's definitely, there's search grants for, you know, engineer reports, you know, not only for sewer, but the water as well, I know there was concern with that as well, as far as like the alternate source, so I mean, of connecting, so if we need to establish how much it would be to connect to, you know, the county's water source, we can do that, but for the sewer, it is, it is a search grant to do the engineering report to, you know, identify, you know, those areas and evaluate the different options as far as total replacement, slip lining, and how long those would, you know, last, and so we can, we can certainly do that, and I can certainly ask, again, like I said, I can contact them, and if, you know, there's an option to get a loan, you know, through the bank first, have them come back and, you know, give us a grant slash loan option as well, I can, I can ask about that as well. So we can do the section, get the loan, and then get a grant in, in reverse, but-
You know, if we do use ARPA money upfront, are we then able to pay ourselves back through the USDA grant? Do you know?
I, I, I'll ask that as well, if we, if we use those funds, if, yeah, I, I probably not, probably not, but I would, I would cer- I would ask, I mean, I would definitely ask.
Well, I mean, to me, it would be like the same thing, is if we appropriate the funds to your department to do this work, then I think in return, we would look for your department to pay that back. So why wouldn't a grant do the same thing if it was to you, coming back to, to refund the town?
So, it, that's a little bit different, so taxpayer money i- isn't a grant, it's the citizens, you're using taxpayer money to, you know, if you do something with the sewer, then you use the sewer money to pay back. If you've already gotten grant money, it's not, you're not paying, like, you wouldn't be paying the citizens back, you would be paying that grant money back. But I, I will certainly ask just to reach out, I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask, so.
I, I'd say, again, if we go the grant route, we're, we're, we're having to pay that back at the cost of the citizens, because we're increasing taxes to, to cover, and it's actually required by USDA to do that, that's-
So I want to clarify one thing, you're not increasing taxes, you're increasing your sewer rates, I, I don't want to-
I, okay, I, I apologize on that, but yes, we're increasing the expenses at the cost of the citizens to, to cover the expense to the USDA grant requirements.
So would USDA look at unfavorably if we did a half and half, part ARPA, and then a balance of a grant?
I don't think so, I, I would, I'd definitely ask, I, as far as like funding-wise, like, if they give you a, I mean, if it's half and half, if, if the project is three hundred thousand, and they give you a fifty percent loan, fifty percent grant, how you pay that loan back, I, I don't think matters if you- so, but I will, I will clarify that with, with them.
So, if we didn't have to use everything, just use part ARPA, part this, the impact to sewer rates might not be as bad, just kind of an alternative thought, I don't know.
Oh, yes, ma'am, and I've, and with the last engineering report, I did ask about if, you know, they, town used availability fees, had more users, would that impact rates? And they did say, yes, it would impact rates, because you're spreading the cost out to more users. You know, I just throwing options out there, just to, I, I know everything's expensive, so I'm just throwing options out there to try and get any money or just help out.
So y'all want Josh to continue searching, or how do you want to do this? You want to authorize some money in the act of, in case he can get a grant down the road, or, I mean, what, if not, we have to come back and revisit this anyhow?
Also, Mr. Mayor, if you could authorize at least the hundred thousand to pay the water-
Okay.
-repairs that have already been made by ARPA funds, if counsel so chooses.
Do I have a motion that we could put on the floor to accept, uh, appropriate a hundred thousand dollars for the water repairs that we've already done?
From, from the ARPA?
From the ARPA funds, yes, excuse me.
I can make that motion to get the discussion.
I got a motion by Jeff, you got a second?
Can you hear?
Second, second.
Is that a question, but I'll offer it again?
I, I was a little indisposed trying to fix some of the tech stuff. I, I just wanted to add on from, from before, I, I think most of this is going to be ARPA, I'm pretty much in agreement with Arthur. I, I just want to reiterate that we do need to be a little realistic of, unfortunately, this is probably going to happen more, we're going to have more breaks. You know, so many times when you go and fix something that's broken, the thing next to it then breaks. But, again, I agree that, you know, these loans are not going to be easy to even talk about, obviously, because it's difficult right now. But that's what our budget work sessions are going to need to be for, because we need to discuss those rates and try to find the math that works between any rate increases, if any, versus what we can make work with any loans, and we need to take the time on that, so, again, I, I think the ARPA is going to be the way to go initially for at least this upfront stuff.
All right, and if anybody hadn't already seen, they, on that table down there, they have some of the saddles that have gone bad over the years, and take a look at them, see how much they've decayed over the fifty years, so they've been in the ground. And you'll see why the problems we're having, what, you know, what we are having. Not that we can do anything about it, just fix them as they, as they happen.
Some of those saddles, some of those saddles, though, were on that line that we put up there after the, the salt leach in the ground, they hadn't been there that long, they were put in in the eighties, and they look like that already. Is that correct? Yeah, that's not fifty-year product.
That's forty-three. Our forty-seven, so yeah, you're getting there.
Yeah, all right. But still, I mean, that's, we've got problems in town that are a lot older than that, and that's what that looks like already in forty years.
Yeah, imagine what these are. You're right, sir. Hang on, let me get this motion done, and then I'll let you, I'll let you do the- Okay, we have a motion?
Would you repeat it for Mr. Stork?
Yeah, the motion is to appropriate funds from ARPA to repairs of the water damages that we, or water pipe damages that we've already fixed in the tone of a hundred thousand dollars. It was first by, Jeff made the motion, second by Randy. You got it?
You good?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, we'll take a roll call on this one. David?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Motion carries a hundred percent. David? I, I said him first.
Oh.
All right. We will come back and discuss the others as we get around to them. All right, item number fourteen. Establish a schedule for future town council work sessions.
Mr. Mayor, am I incorrect in saying we need to make a course of action for the sewer?
Oh, I'm sorry, the something else too.
Right, we, we just did water, but we need to-
Yeah.
Move on this-
Kevin wants to talk too. Kevin, you want to talk about the water real quick? I'm sorry, I was just trying to move this on, it's getting dark out there.
Pass your bedtime.
Pass my bedtime. Yes, sir.
Oh, talk about the sewer line. There, the issue never started until we had, to my knowledge, until we had that water main break, where we were losing three hundred thousand gallons of water a day.
That seapole?
Yes, sir. Okay, so it started up there north of the intersection at that manhole, where stemalado tried to jet in. Well, that's where the water main break was, where we losing three hundred thousand gallons of water, which was following the sewer line, okay? So they could only go in roughly four, five, six feet at the most, couldn't go no further. We had issues up here on, between Courthouse Lane and Milford Street. That was the issue from the sewer line also, because it was sending silk from three hundred thousand gallons of water coming down that pipe. So we had silk, we had rocks, you know, it was jetted, it was, it was pumped out by, by stemalado. You know, I, I, I really think that we all need to drop back and punt instead of spending three hundred thousand dollars, or five hundred sixty-seven thousand, or six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think we need to go up to that intersection, to that manhole, dig where, where they cannot get through it with, with the cameras. It appears that there's no other issues from the light going south down Main Street. Everything appears to be flowing good. Am, am I talking wrong, or am I right? Because from what I can see, when I popped the manhole up, and I would say, everything was flowing good from the light coming into the manhole where you- So do we have a small problem that can be fixed with a small amount of money? Or do we need to replace the whole thing? But I, I see no use in going and digging that whole street up, even though that's what I bid it on, when we only have a small problem. I think you need to start right at that manhole, expose that, dig it up, get stemalado here to, to, to jet it and camera it. I think you can be money here.
And you know, the one question, you know, when-
You know, the one question, you know, when we went to the downstream manhole, I thought that they had gone and jetted and couldn't go but so far. And I thought that what we heard.
And that seemed like what I heard, but, you know, being that close to where that main break was, you had more force of water up there than it came on down the line, you know, and it was probably not nowhere, no mere, not as much pressure. But I really think if you start up at that intersection, right there by that manhole, you know, the worst thing it could, it could cause you would.
Could you follow it then, without the chance of collapsing anything as you go along?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But I think.
We can do a tracing on it, just.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Or we could go back to some of the cleanouts that come off of them couple houses, get them to camera that, let them go into the main. Hey, let's find out if it's good, bad, or in between.
If there was an increase in capacity going through the sewer treatment facility, wouldn't that say that there's got to be a connection to get it there? Wouldn't, if there was a sewer collapse, right, and the water was dumping into that, wouldn't it have gone somewhere else instead of making it to the plant?
Oh, it was suddenly going to the plant because I think.
It was making its way into that sewer line, but it kind of collapsed it, and then it ran down it, then it was getting back into that sewer line. You know, we could see the flow. It was really flowing heavy.
Okay. I was just curious if we had identified an excess of capacity going through the plant, and there was a sewer main collapse. And I'm just thinking, would it stop, or would it, like you said, continue on? So it bypassed the collapse and then somehow got back into it? I got you.
Yeah, I just, I thought that that downstream manhole that was down closer to Oakwood Street, I thought that, you know, they had determined when they sent that camera back up towards the intersection that it had collapsed as well. But maybe that's not the case is what you're thinking. I mean, I think it's certainly worth investigating if we, if that's how, I mean, you've been out there working on it.
Yes, sir. Yeah. So I really think that we can get stemalado coming in there and jet it, you know, as we, either we can excavate it or whom I will. I think it'd be, you know, if we get in there and we find out, hey, it is collapsed, the only thing we can do is put it back together, hook it back into the manhole, and we'll be back in the same boat that we were. So I really think, you know.
Would you be able to, you would have to take that manhole out, or would you be able to work with that?
No, sir. We will be able to work with that manhole.
With that manhole?
Yes, sir.
You know it's all brick.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We will be able to work with that.
That's a big say right there.
Yeah.
What would the cost of this be?
Probably under 15, probably under 15,000. Now, that's not including, you know, paying stemalado, you know, to jet it and camera it and vacuum it and everything, but it's still a long way from 300,000.
Cameron does, what, what are they, 800, 900,000 a day? I mean, good truck out, what are they at?
What they do, I mean, it's probably, for the town to be out here, probably for a camera truck, three or four thousand, for the jetter, probably about the same. But they tried to jet that line and they couldn't get back up it, and they tried to send the camera up, they couldn't. I mean, that's definitely an option, and I mean, if it really is, and you can definitely try that. I know when we repaired the sewer line right here on Butler Street and tried to patch back together, get it to work, it just kept breaking.
Josh, can't hear you on the recording.
I'm sitting here listening to him.
Sorry. They definitely, so stemal tried to jet from the manhole near the dial system center going back up. They could not get very far. They tried to send the camera in there, and it just didn't work. I mean, it's certainly an option to, you know, dig down and try and jet from there. You know, stemal's concern, you know, has always been when we've jetted all of these lines and cameraed all of these lines, if they keep jetting and jetting and jetting, it just tears them up even more because they've already gotten cracks and different parts in there. You know, when we have cameraed some of these lines, we've only been able to get so far before you hit a chunk of concrete or it bellies out and they can't go any further. So, I mean, it definitely is an option to fix the, you know, spot right now and then move forward with the engineering report. That is definitely another option, so.
Joshua, let me ask, could y'all take y'all's camera and go into some of those cleanouts, drop it in that cleanout and go into that main and see what you got versus paying stemalado, you know, all this money? I mean, I know that we've used y'all's cameras before over in the subdivisions where we have sewer blockages and everything.
We can certainly try. Ours is only a push camera.
Yes.
And we can certainly try. I mean, I guess the only concern would it be getting stuck in there if you hit the main and then it turns and you can't get it back out? Usually sewer mains are camera with the, what they call a crawler camera. But, I mean, we can certainly try that.
Josh, does the county have either the jet or the camera equipment?
As far as, I mean, we have our own jetter that we can, I mean, we definitely tried to send ours up. I mean, we got it down pretty far one time. I mean, we can try again with ours. As far as a camera truck, I think Mr. Sealy's, off the top of my head, I don't think they do, but I mean.
I thought Williams said they have one, but it's inoperable right now.
And that could be true as well.
Yes, the hydro track that the county got, they're saying it's too much to, to repair. They do not have a vac truck at this time, or a hydro vac.
We got a vac trailer, right?
We have a vac trailer too, yes.
So we could, essentially, we could try it in-house first, right? If we didn't, or go ahead.
So you want, you're talking about jetting and then vacuuming out the whatever debris comes?
Well, I guess I'm understanding Mr. Langford to say that we should maybe entertain a camera and/or jet, right? Which you said we have already tried once, but he's saying, hey, maybe try it again from what he saw. We have the equipment in-house. It may not be to the commercial grade or heavy duty, I guess, is what that independent contractor had. But we could attempt it ourselves, right, for very minimal cost, just labor hours.
Yeah, we can certainly go out there and try and jet it again. And like I said, we can certainly try and put the push camera down one of the cleanouts, you know, do that first.
And then if we're unsuccessful, then, hey, we need to call in the contractor and try it. I mean, it's just an option. Try it in-house first. We got the equipment.
I mean, why don't we try those investigations, and then when we come back at a next meeting, we'll have some better answers. I mean, does that seem reasonable to you? Yeah.
I don't know if we need a motion. I'll make a motion.
You said you're making a motion to do what now?
I'll make a motion to, not to exceed $20,000 to investigate the status of our sewer system in between, I'll say Chase and Main, all the way to Broadus and Main.
Is that what you want, or just you just want?
No, I was just speaking about up at the intersection.
I was just giving a generalized area.
You wanted your line? Okay, all right.
You want from.
You could just say, in such areas, Mr. Langford thinks is appropriate. That way, if he found something else and he felt like, oh, I need.
Okay, should I just keep a, and I mean, no offense, just a generalized statement, like where there could be a potential problem. I'm not trying to name a contractor, you know what I'm saying? I don't want to increase a, if somebody else came and said, oh, you know, why didn't you?
Right.
I'm just trying to keep it neutral, if that makes sense. So, okay, I'll start over again. I'll make a motion to not exceed $20,000 for the investigation of our sewer system here in the town limits.
By Mr. Langford.
Right.
With existing equipment.
I was just giving a generalized fund, because I, after speaking to Mr. Erby just a second ago, I thought we would try it in-house first. If we have no success, then we will look at independent contractors.
Okay.
And then the only other change that it would be would, because those are where the loops are right there, but it's, so whatever that would be, I mean, that would be out of the scope of the, of trying to repair the sewer line, you know, so whatever that cost would be, I mean, that would definitely have to be added.
That should be just one lane on the loop, right?
Yes, sir. I believe so. Yes, sir.
So.
Should we get an estimate?
Yes. So your motion is for staff to attempt to utilize existing equipment to examine the status of the sewer system right now. And if they're not able to be successful, to authorize the town manager to spend up to $20,000 to hire Mr. Langford to survey the relevant portions of the sewer system and make recommendations to council at the next meeting.
I was just going to leave it at a generalized, I'm sorry, amount, because there's another contractor that Mr. Erby spoke of, and I don't want to, if I think if we drill down and say specific contractors, it, you know, we may not be able to move to that company that has a jet truck and camera if we just name one and not the other, you know what I'm saying? So I was just going to keep it a generalized statement.
That's fine. I was just trying to help you.
That's fine.
Where would this?
I'll make a motion that we investigate the town sewer system and up to $15,000, of which would be authorized by the town manager.
And where's the 15,000 coming from?
I'll go ahead and say ARPA funds.
All right, okay. I got a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Jeff, finally. We've had plenty of discussions. We got any more before I call the vote? All right, we'll take a roll call. Valerie? Dan?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, motion carries. So good luck in investigating that, and hope you come back with a good finding for us. With Josh, okay?
You know, just one other thing, if this doesn't work and y'all cannot get funds for seven, eight months, you know, the price is definitely going to go up. Not, not too awful high, but stones already went up a dollar seventy-five a ton as of this week. It can went up again.
And diesel fuel's over $4.
Yeah.
Again.
Yeah, so, you know, and plus, if we wait until the winter time, it may end up happening to wait until the springtime due to, Mr. Vida wants us to pay every day or every night after we did our excavation, and the plant, the asphalt plants are not going to be running. So it would definitely need to be done prior to.
Through the asphalt plants closing.
Thanks given, or it would have to wait till probably the 15th of April.
Kevin, why would they say that when you go on these other places and they're always putting plates down, steel plates down overnight?
Vida wants us to plate it. Yeah, we already.
But they do it in every other place, though. I'm always driving over plates someplace.
Vida's already said no.
That's the man I got to make happen, because I can make it harder and tougher.
Because I asked him about the plating too. He didn't say no 100%, but he gave enough reasons why he didn't want it, so. All right, do we? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And are we done with 13 now? All right, moving on to 14. Establish a scheduled meeting of future town council workshops. I'd assume this is for the budget reason?
It's for more than the budget, Mr. Mayor and council. I've heard several council members discuss how to have meetings and discuss things. And some, I think, feel that a work session before the meeting might be too long, so you might want to change it to six o'clock instead of five o'clock.
I can do that.
Heard others that would like to have, potentially like to have, like an ongoing work session in the middle of the month, aside from the town council meeting on another day. So I'm bringing this to council for discussion and potentially to vote on when you would like to have your work sessions, your ongoing work session, if you would like to do that.
I'd just like to make a request, and I'm just one person here, but Thursday nights is when we get our truck into the hardware store. So if it could be a night other than a Thursday night, I'm already off one Thursday night coming to the meeting here, which is fine. But when you got a semi coming in and they're on the schedule, we got to get somebody there. Tonight, there was nobody there, but I got the truck driver to actually meet me tomorrow morning at six o'clock to unload it. But, I mean, other than a Thursday night, it'd be great for me.
Yeah, I'm all for moving, you know, if we want to do a work session before, I would prefer six rather than five. But if we want to have one during the middle of the month, I'm happy with that as well. And most any night works for me, other than Wednesday.
I don't mean to create confusion too. I'm good except for the third Tuesday of every month. Got a pre-standup meeting and then I think the second Wednesday's, so that would be the same as Dan.
Well, you're killing me with the lack of Wednesdays. That's my best day. And nobody wants a Friday, which is my other great day.
That was, that was the reason I left it like it was, but if you want to change it till six, we can do that. Just remember, it gives you an hour to discuss instead of two hours, and sometimes they can get pretty lengthy, like today, but.
Mr. Mayor, we could do like a six to eight, right? It's just a work session.
Then you got to move the meeting till eight o'clock.
No, we're talking about an extra work session in the month, right?
No, I was talking about the same night, keeping it the same night instead of five, starting at six. So that gives you an hour.
Allison, what night suits you best?
Other than that, you need to go to a different night then.
I could do three months from today.
Okay.
Any night but Tuesday night.
Nobody said no on Monday, so why don't we do it on a Monday night?
Planning Commission, right? Planning Commission.
It's no longer on Mondays. It's the third Thursday.
I would recommend the third, seeing that the council meeting's on the first week. Go the third, right?
Those broadband meetings are on the third Monday, right? Yeah. County thing I have to do.
The fourth Monday? Okay.
The fourth Monday this month is Memorial Day.
Let's not do that.
Maybe starting in June then, since you're already having a work session on the budget next week.
That's fine.
Is that good?
Honestly, I was thinking this was something that's going to like start in the new budget year, because we do have a lot of stuff going on at the moment.
Okay, starting in July.
Valerie won that one a few months from now, so.
And then what about the work sessions prior to your town council meetings? Do you prefer five o'clock to continue or six o'clock?
I get what Dan's saying. Sometimes five o'clock is early. But every time we come in here, we have, we spend almost a whole full two hours trying to get things across. And we still, in my time being on a council, we've had Monday night, or we've had that work session where two hours wasn't enough.
Yeah, but I feel like if you have three hours, you'll argue three hours, or we can just argue real quick in an hour, know we have a time constraint and get it done. I mean, I really feel like if you have more, if you have a meeting that lasts more than an hour, you don't need to meet anymore. I know we have this big meeting, but sometimes meetings can just go on and we just, because we know we have from six to eight. That's just how I look at it.
Considering that you are having a second meeting every month now, or a second work session rather, every month, then maybe that will give enough time. Okay.
Not that anybody would go for it, but I mean, I would honestly, I'd push for still going at five and starting a regular meeting at six just for staff. But I know everybody's got some other things going on.
So I'm totally confused, but what, Allison, if you could just send. So I'm totally confused, but what, Allison, if you could just send an email to whatever is good.
All right, thank you.
All right, we could talk about it in the next work session.
Well, now, moving on, we're gonna go to 15.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this was the issue that we talked about in the work session pertaining to your utility service area and identifying it, maybe restricting it for the time being, and then when we do get more water, we can then amend the comprehensive plan again, but it really does belong in the comprehensive plan, and so the request is for town council to move it to the planning commission with a 100-day turnaround or no particular time turnaround, and then it, then the town council will hear it, it will be a comprehensive plan amendment.
Can I just move as presented?
Second.
Get discussed, we can discuss.
Yeah, okay, thank you. We good, Mr. Mayor? There's a motion in a second? To move forward to discussion.
I'm waiting on a motion?
No, we already got a motion in a second.
You already got a motion?
In a second.
In a second, okay, excuse me, I was reading something. All right, all discussions?
I was just gonna, I know this may be a stretch and maybe we can't do it, but I was gonna say, could we tack on to that with that service area, trying to identify where our lines are? And I, may not be the right way to do it, but I was gonna say we could, if we've got a generalized area of where we know those lines are, right? Could we call in a missed utility ticket to ask them to mark and try to provide, like, if we're thinking it's at the, like, at the end of that line, like, say we've got a distribution line for water or sewer and we're trying to figure out exactly where it's at, or would we need to hire an independent contractor?
If you wanna dump water and sewer lines, we'd have to hire some missed utility only mark the table and say, now we're in a meeting, we don't mark the work and do it.
Now, Arthur, we do have a water line, I mean, there was an ASBIL done as part of that USDA, Josh probably needs, we need to get that to him, but I think water, we've identified as best we can based on historical data and some county employees, and some of that is missed utility marked, well, missed utility doesn't mark anything because they called Josh and Josh has to go market, so, you know, we do have an ASBIL plan that generally shows where all the water is, but not sewer.
Understood, maybe take a different stab at that, could we get a, if we don't already have a pre-existing map or topography area, I guess, coverage, could we try to reach out to the county and ask them with their GIS capabilities if they're willing just to provide an overlay like a base map and then we could fill in, like, one for water and sewer? I know we had them, but they're kinda dated, like, maybe if we could try to update that and go along with the service area map, does that make sense?
I think that can be accomplished.
Okay.
Man, I think it's good to have, I think it's, yes, it'd be good for all of us to have something and staff, yeah.
Even if it's out of fee, you know, to their staff, I think it would be a tremendous asset to us to say, okay, hey, here's our, you know, lines that are in there and we've got something that we could present.
All right, you wanna read that motion again? Make sure we got it right?
The motion would be to approve the request that the planning commission provide within 100 days, would you like that in there, 100 days? Or no time limit, okay? Within 100 days, a comprehensive plan amendment to identify and document a public utility service area for review by town council.
All right.
As well as a GIS map.
Okay, thank you.
To accompany it.
All right, we have, we have the motion, we have the second. You gotta say something, Valerie?
Yeah, I was gonna say, what if they don't make the 100 days? Can we put in, or, because we've had someone on the planning commission who has not.
Okay, the motion would be approve request that the planning commission provide a comprehensive plan, a draft comprehensive plan amendment to identify and document a public utility service area and, including a GIS map for review by town council.
I'll amend my motion, Wesley.
And second.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Oppose, aye. Hearing none, it all passes. All right, now we're down to 16, one that was added in. For motion to present. Hang on until we get council person back online.
I don't wanna blabber the process for too long, I mean.
Can we take a 10-minute recess until we get, try to get David back on the line?
I don't think you're gonna get me back on line.
You don't think so?
They had a bad storm.
Really?
And that the generator's working, they have partial power.
Okay.
But that it's.
Okay. Wow, rough area. All right, so what are we doing? We brought this down here, new resolution has been done, and if somebody feels that it is significant enough, if you wanna make a motion, please do. All right, hearing none, we moving on. Any committee meetings, reports? All right, didn't have any. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a first, I got a second, but Jeff, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.